Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the order, the November tenth, twenty twenty-five, meeting, regular meeting of the Board of Education for Homewood School District one fifty-three. Roll call, please.
Mrs. The Fay.
Here.
Mr. Booth. Mr. Bosch.
Here.
Mrs. Popalka.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Scully. Mr. Zinnaman.
Here.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the public hearing of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the regular Board of Education meeting of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Are there any edits or corrections to the minutes? We have motion, so.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item is future dates.
Yes, good evening, everybody. It's great to see so many happy people here. So it's, uh, we'll get to the celebration soon enough. But just a quick reminder, tomorrow is Veterans Day. Uh, in District one fifty-three, the last several years, we have chosen to have our, have our students present in attendance as opposed to sitting at home. Our belief is that we can better recognize our veterans and their service to our country. So here at James Hart, starting at eight thirty, right out in front of the building, at the flagpole, we will be doing a flag raising and the band will be playing taps. And then our veterans will come inside for a cup of coffee. And at nine o'clock, we'll have an assembly with our eighth grade students coming in where they learn about the history of each of the branches. And we have another opportunity to recognize our veterans and any family members that come with them. And after the assembly, which is thirty minutes long, we'll go into the cafeteria for a short breakfast. So it's a, a great way for us to recognize our local veterans in person. If anybody has any veterans who are in their families, we encourage you to attend. Again, that's eight thirty, right in front of James Hart. Monday night, November seventeenth, uh, tonight, you can see up here on our screen, we're going to be having a presentation on the IAR, which is the statewide test. We did get the two thousand twenty-five results. And parents, you'll be having, you'll be getting an opportunity to receive your individual student report, which has all the scores. Uh, and this is an opportunity for our building principals to explain in detail how to interpret those score results. I know it sounds dry, but it's really quite interesting. So I encourage you to come, uh, Monday night, six thirty, in the James Hart cafeteria. That's for, uh, James Hart and Churchill. And then next week, uh, Thursday and Friday is our fall musical, Seucicle the Musical. So it's always a great event, big crowds both nights. If you're going to come see the musical on Thursday or Friday nights of next week, we encourage you to get tickets ahead of time. You can find out that information on our website. And then the week after that is Thanksgiving week. Of course, we are closed on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, but we do have parent teacher conferences on Monday and Tuesday. Slightly different format this year. On Monday, the conferences will be from one to eight P M. And those are in person. And then on Tuesday morning, uh, they are done remotely. We have had a lot of families that have complimented us on offering a remote opportunity for conferences. It's a lot more convenient, uh, for several people to attend. So Tuesday morning from eight to one, and again, that is.
Food drive? Food drive?
Oh, food drive, yes. This is Shelley is back here feeding herself. I wasn't quite sure what she was doing. Um, yes, uh, we are also doing a food drive, uh, starting next week. So we encourage all of our families, again, information on our website, uh, to bring in cans of food. We're doing collection at all three of our buildings so we can help support our local community, certainly during the times of, uh, the holidays. But also, as you know, Washington, D.C. hasn't been playing very nicely with one another. And so, uh, there's a lot of families who are in need, perhaps more so than, than ever. So we encourage people to support that effort. Thank you for the reminder, Shelley. And I believe that's it. I know that's a lot of dates, but important ones.
Thank you. Uh, next thing on the presentation, which I'm sure a lot of people are here for, we have several awards that we're going to present this evening. And the first one is on the Tom Dockweiler Awards.
Yes, so, uh, historically, let me just quickly tell you, who is Tom Dockweiler? Tom Dockweiler is a former board member of the one fifty-three Board of Education. So when he left the board after many, many years, an award was named in his honor. And he was a passionate, passionate advocate. He's still a resident in the Homewood, by the way. But he was a passionate advocate for students. And so we named the Tom Dockweiler Award after our student recipients. And I know we have students in attendance tonight and family members. Uh, and so what we're going to do is we'll call up the building principal, and we're going to start with James Hart. But we'll call the principal up, uh, they'll introduce the student and talk about why that student. Now, keep in mind, each of our buildings has between five hundred and fifty and seven hundred and fifty students. Big buildings, one student selected from each building. So if you are that student, this is an incredible, incredible honor. And all of our family members should be, uh, very, very proud. And so we're going to ask our principals to explain what was it that made that student so exceptional? So at this time, I would ask, uh, Ms. Johnson, Principal of James Hart School, to come up, grab a microphone so we can all hear you. You'll have to use one here at the table. And we'll get started. Ms. Johnson.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Um, the recipient for James Hart is Gavin Hall. So today Gavin, you came down to the office just to ask a question. And right after you left, Ms. Hugo said, "We picked the right one." So just, just know that your presence, just like I said, just you coming down to the office, that, and it, it just gave me chills. Yes, we did. So, um, we, we looked at students just in terms of growth. And we had, you know, the opportunity, we looked, you know, academic growth, but Gavin stood out because of her leadership and her social emotional growth. Gavin, last year, basketball season wasn't the best time. And those that know, know, when I see her, some of them know what that mean. But from that, after that, we started seeing the leadership. We started seeing you grow. Gavin, you are three sports, okay? Two she had never done, so she, you know, so basketball was a little rough, but then we started seeing her become a leader on and off the court. Not only just with academics, but just seeing you even out there. I remember seeing you out there with volleyball and just being a leader, but also being vulnerable. This was something new and not sure what I'm doing, but amazing. Then we're starting to see it in the hallways. We're seeing it in the classroom. And then, I mean, and truly, it was, big girl, your light was shining. Okay? And, and we, and, and absolutely loved it. Next thing you know, we're out at soccer, and I remember sitting out there with soccer. Well, I know Gavin did soccer. Well, Gavin didn't, you know, this Gavin tried out for soccer. Next thing you know, Gavin is out there being the goalie. And again, seeing that leadership, seeing that growth, the, and amazing, and it's carried over into this year. So please know how much we respect, we love, we, you know, just our conversation. I don't even know where I'm at on these cards, girl.
Oh, God, I'm just playing my cards.
The improvements that we're not only seeing, but like I said, we saw them everywhere and truly appreciate it. And you know, we tell you all the time, you know, we are, we're always telling you between me, Ms. Hugo, Mr. Hugo, Ms. Gladney, we are all, your coaches were always telling you. So again, we, that light is in you, it is shining, we saw it, but it is truly there and is carried over into your eighth grade year. So because of what we saw as an incredible growth, you are our recipient for this year. So you are Gavin Hall.
And your family, if you could come up, we will now get a picture of board of, uh, board members, if you could come over here. And, uh, Ms. Wood, could you join this? I'm sorry, Ms. Hugo, wrong school. Ms. Hugo, if you could come up also and join.
We good?
Okay.
Hey, Shelley, can you take a picture with your family?
Oh.
Do I, everybody or Mr. Bosch? Or the principal, and then the entire board?
And then we'll, we want to.
Let's give Gavin a round of applause. And thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next, uh, Churchill Principal, Tara Peacock. Ms. Peacock, if you could come forward, please.
All right. How we hear that voice carries. Kids are like, "We heard your company, Miss." Very good, very good. All right, I am here to announce and talk about this amazing young man, and he probably wishes he could crawl under the carpet. He wants no applause, he wants no accolades, he wants to be invisible and not on my watch. This amazing young man is smart, increased his star scores up to the ninety-six percentile. He is a leader, he will share information with others so they will get the, the public praise, but he wants none of it for himself. Um, I call him quiet but mighty. Um, I am the kind of principal where I watch and I observe, and so I watch this young man a lot at lunch. And so we're moving around and a student was trying to get my attention, and I didn't see the student, I didn't hear the student. But when this particular young man said, "Mrs. Peacock, such and such is trying to get your attention," I say, "Yes, sir, where is the student?" Because he commands that kind of a presence. He's also an upstander. He knows the right things to do at all times. And even if he, if it even crosses his mind for an iota of a second, he's still gonna do the right thing. So this young man is Michael Williams, and I would love for Michael and his family to know how important you are to me, how hard you work, I notice. And even when our student council leaders came to see me, Michael came with one of the leaders, and after the leader finished talking, I said, "Michael, tell me more." Am I right? And Michael looked like, "Man, why is she asking me?" I said, "Because you have very important things to say. There's such greatness in you, you are a quiet leader just now, you're gonna blow up later." So remember, Mrs. Peacock called it out first. But he is such an amazing young man. Again, unassuming, but he's like a Superman to me. So we can give a hand for Michael Williams.
Michael, if you and your family could come up, we'll get a picture with you. Do you see the camera? Just the family.
Um, first I'd like to.
I don't want to embarrass Michael further, but I have to say, congratulations, Michael. Michael was one of my pre-K students before he came, uh, into one fifty-three. And that leadership that Mrs. Peacock talks about, I'll tell you, it has been evident since preschool. And now I have the privilege of having his sister in my class as well. So congratulations, Mike, I'm so proud of you.
Michael, I have one more thing. Could you come up here? I forgot something very important. Everyone knows the bullseye. All right. And now we have Willow School and our Principal, Ryan Jones. Ms. Jones.
Thank you, you can hold the applause. All right, Willow has, uh, currently, gosh, about five hundred and sixty kiddos. Um, and our recipient this evening is a student that would normally blend in. Uh, Jade is the kiddo that is sweet. She is kind, she is caring, so she is not the kid that you might see in the principal's office. But she is the kid that every time I come around to her classroom, I notice that she's doing a wonderful job. She's engaged, she's learning, she's doing her best. So she grew, um, over fifty points on our star test in both reading and in math. So beyond just her academics, here are a few things that her former teachers have said about her. Jade is a kind, caring, and energetic student who loves to learn. Jade's academic growth in first grade was absolutely amazing. Over the course of the year, I was able to see Jade flourish in her learning opportunities. Jade is a hardworking student with a determination to succeed in all areas. In every activity, small group, craft, or independent work time, Jade put her best effort into everything she does. She will ask questions when needing support, help others, and be a leader in the classroom, always being a great example to others on how to show the Willow way. I hope that as Jade continues to grow in her academics, that she continues to work hard while also having fun learning. Her current teacher said that she is a hardworking student who consistently tries her best with all tasks, including challenges. Her kindness spreads to her peers and teachers, which helps us maintain a positive classroom environment. Jade is a wonderful student who continues to strive to do her best with a smile on her face. You should know that I asked the teachers individually, they did not communicate with one another on this, but what you can see about Jade is there is a commitment to being kind, she is caring, she is loved at Willow School, and we are so proud of you, Jade. And her name, surprisingly, is so close to my daughter's. Her name is Jade Taylor Lando. My daughter's name is Jada Taylor. So I always have to catch myself. Um, but just so sweet to me, so sweet to friends at Willow. And Jade, we are so proud of you coming up here, sweetheart.
You can feel a little bit of the last word. Get a picture with you. Family.
All right, Ms. Jade. Ready?
Okay.
One more brace now.
The only time I'm going to be tall is when I'm standing.
Gavin, you follow me?
Yes.
All right, let's get her. Okay, so Ms. Jones and Ms. Wood, if you would stay up here. Uh, so at this point, we kind of transitioned. We had a, a great job of celebrating our three students, and we also realize behind every successful student, first and foremost, are family. And so for all of those family members who came out tonight to celebrate with your student, we thank you, we thank you for your commitment to their success. Uh, we realize in a school, we're only as good as the family's, uh, partnership with us. And so you are their primary support, and, uh, we are here to help you raise your children to be as successful as possible. So thank you so much for investing in us. And also, we're incredibly fortunate to have hundreds in this district of gifted adults who have committed their lives to working with your children. And so tonight, we celebrate six of those individuals, two from each school. And so similar to what we just did for our students, I'm going to ask our principals and assistant principals to introduce their students. This is called the Moran Award, named after Jerry Moran. Oh, I said students. The Jerry Moran Award recognizes excellence in teaching. So, uh, each of our building, uh, leaders will introduce, uh, a certified winner and a, uh, classified winner, and we will do those at the same time. So we'll call one up, and then we'll call the second one, and we'll get all of our pictures together. Okay? So Ms. Jones, Ms. Wood, if you could introduce the Willow recipients.
Awesome. So, um, you know, we have two wonderful, uh, staff members of Willow School, um, that I am so, I, I could steal Tara's headline of being super proud and being the super proud principal to honor our, um, staff members that are with us today. Um, I'll start with, uh, Mrs. Tamika Bledsoe. Come on up, Tamika. Um, to know Tamika is to love her. She is dedicated, she's an amazing singer. Um, I try to join their group, um, and they don't let me, but I join anyway, and then they stop singing, so I will stop singing. Um, she is kind, caring, thoughtful, um, and she gets with the kids. Do you hear me? She is the person that is gonna hold you to it, uh, but she does it in love and in kindness. When I, uh, called Tamika to my office, I said, no, actually, I called her on the phone, and I said, "Uh, Tamika, you know, I, I really want to nominate you." And she just immediately was elated. Then she walked out to my office, and the look on her face really brought me to tears because she told me in eighteen years, it is just so exciting to be recognized. And so, uh, please join me today in recognizing Ms. Tamika for Willow School.
All right, and Tamika, congratulations. We have a resolution for you. Mr. Zinnerman.
I wrote this, you should, I wrote this. Okay.
Student Support Educational Excellence Award, board resolution for Tamika Bledsoe. Whereas Tamika Bledsoe serves as an exceptional member of our educational support staff at Willow, whose dedication and care have left a lasting impact on students and colleagues alike. And whereas Tamika Bledsoe consistently demonstrates a nurturing spirit, creating an environment where every student feels valued, supported, capable of success. And whereas Tamika Bledsoe, intelligence and creativity shine through in ways she makes learning engaging, meaningful, and fun for all students. And whereas Tamika Bledsoe, skillfully balances compassion with high expectations, holding students accountable in ways that help them grow both academically and personally. And whereas Tamika Bledsoe, Bledsoe's positive energy, professionalism, and commitment to excellence reflect our standards, our highest standards. We proudly extend our heartfelt appreciation for her long-term service to our students and families. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Homewood Elementary School, District one fifty-three hereby recognizes Tamika Bledsoe for her dedication to Homewood students and her excellence in serving our learning community. Adopted unanimously, unanimously, this tenth day of November, twenty twenty-five.
Congratulations.
And everybody, I got my whole family. The whole family.
We good, everybody?
All right, our next, uh, award member or winner, excuse me, um, is for our certified staff position. Uh, Denise Mustala is. Exactly, friends. Uh, Denise is an amazing person first. Um, she lights my day, and she doesn't even realize sometimes that she does. Um, you are one of the most caring individuals I know. You are so flexible, and I don't just mean that, um, because she's a P E teacher. She goes with the flow. Um, but she also can tell me things in a way that, um, is respectful, honors her craft, and honors the students at Willow School. Um, Denise is also a long-term member of the staff, thirty-one years at Willow School. And she's so. And she's so honest. So when I let Denise know that I had nominated her for the award, she came to me and she said, "Well, Ryan, I really gotta tell you something." I said, "Oh, no, what she can tell me today?" She said, "Well, I already won this award from the previous administration." And she said, "And so if that means that you can't pick me, then I understand." But one thing that we all agree on is if I'm a new administrator and saw it, and the previous administrator saw it, something's great about you, Denise. I appreciate you. I'm so grateful to have you on the team." And she only has two more years. Two and a half more years. So we will ride this wave while we have you. Um, she does a mindfulness group now for our kiddos, and, um, it's new again this year. And when I said, "Oh, I need you to do this," she said, "Oh, no problem." I'm so excited. And every time I see her, she tells me how excited she is to continue to do the work with students at Willow School. So Denise, thank you on behalf of the Willow team. We are so excited to have you as our honorary this year.
We have a resolution.
I wrote this too.
So, that's why we can talk.
I don't know.
Jerry Moran Educational Excellence Award Board Resolution. Whereas Denise Mustala is a valuable and committed member of Willow School. And whereas Denise has demonstrated exceptional flexibility in adapting to the diverse needs of students, staff, and our school community. Whereas Denise is always solution-focused to ensure that the PE team succeeds for the benefit of our students. She knows flexibility in all situations and sustains a positive attitude and connection within the Willow community. And whereas Denise consistently models kindness, compassion, creating a positive and inclusive environment for all students. Her caring nature extends beyond the gymnasium, fostering strong relationships and encouraging students to do their best. And whereas Denise shows unwavering commitment to Willow School and its students by promoting health, fitness, and lifelong wellness among students. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Homewood Elementary School, District 153 hereby recognizes Denise Mustala for her dedication to Homewood students and excellence in serving our learning community. Adopted unanimously this tenth day of November 2025.
All right, congratulations again, Denise and Tamika. Just be kind. If you could return center stage.
Okay, so I will start with this young man who is just phenomenal. He is newer to our building, to me, but he's been in the district for over twenty years. Um, being our head custodian, he wears many hats. Um, this, this amazing man is a team player. He goes above and beyond. He gives me frequent, frequent reminders, like you didn't put in what, the way you want the gym set up, and I love him for that. Um, he led our team this summer to truly clean our building from top to bottom. And this is not just, uh, this was no small feat. We had staff members who had been at Churchill for years, veterans, in their comments, and I quote, "I've never seen the building so clean. How did they get could get this clean?" Um, he is such a team player. He is so flexible. We know in buildings, things happen all the time, and he comes with a smile and a corny joke, which you need to laugh in the moment. And so, Brian, I just wanna say, you have made this year such a pleasure to his wife and his daughter. I know he's gone a lot, 'cause he's at our building a whole lot. For example, being there at four o'clock this morning. That is the commitment and the dedication. And from the bottom of my heart, Annalisa, we appreciate you, Brian. Um, I can't thank you enough for all that you do and all that you continue to do, 'cause you're not going anywhere. So if we could give a hand for Brian Hill.
Jerry Moran, Jerry Moran Educational Excellence Award Board Resolution. Whereas Brian Hill has provided nearly twenty years of dedicated service to Homewood School, District 153, beginning his tenure in January, in January 2006, and demonstrating unwavering commitment to our educational community. And whereas Brian has exhibited exceptional versatility and adaptability throughout his career, successfully transitioning from custodial services to grounds maintenance, and consistently stepping forward to fill any role where the district has need. And whereas Brian has earned the distinction of being recognized as an indispensable team member, willingly providing support across all departments and facilities at any time, thereby ensuring the continued smooth operation of our schools. And whereas Brian exemplifies the highest standards of loyalty, kindness, and professionalism in his daily interactions with students, staff, community members, while maintaining his devotion as a husband and father. And whereas Brian's extensive experience, institutional knowledge, and proven leadership qualities make him exceptionally qualified to assume responsibility, responsibilities of head custodian for Homewood School, District 153. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Homewood Elementary School, District 153 hereby commends Brian for his exemplary service, dedication, and commitment to our district, enthusiastically points him to the position of head custodian effective immediately. Adopted unanimously this tenth day of November 2025.
All right, and for our certified staff, oh my goodness, this young lady is just simply amazing. I had to ask her, and I asked around, I said, "Hey, did you get this before?" And she's like, "No." I said, "Okay, we're nominating you." Um, this phenomenal reading specialist and interventionist is dedicated and exceptional teacher. She's a team player. I call her helper of all mankind. There is no person that she will not help. Uh, she uses creative ways to teach our students phonemic awareness. She incorporates movement into every vowel sound that she teaches. She thinks outside the box. She's flexible, and most importantly, she's kind. Now, she's a husband, she's a mother, but she does so much more. And sometimes I wanna say, just say no. So she finally said no. Husband, she finally said no to some stuff, okay? Um, and that's necessary. So if you would, uh, celebrate with me, Riley Papp.
Jerry Moran Educational Excellence Award Board Resolution. Whereas Riley Papp has served as an educator. I just wanna know, this is one of the toughest things to do in the world of education. There's no fear. There was a survey that was done, and it was public speaking. I just wanna make that, sorry. Whereas Riley Papp is, and what do you teach? Is it education? Reading, reading, oh, reading specialist. Whereas Riley has served as an educator at Churchill for fifteen years, establishing herself as an invaluable member of both the school team and the broader Homewood community. And whereas Riley demonstrates exceptional skill in fostering authentic and constructive relationships with students, colleagues, and community members. And whereas Riley consciously and purposely integrates the vital principles of equity into her daily educational practices, thereby enhancing the experiences of our students and their families. And whereas Riley utilizes her extensive subject matter expertise and innate adaptive teaching methods to ensure the academic growth and achievement of our students. And whereas Riley has made substantial contributions to our school community through her exemplary character, outstanding educational prowess, and unwavering advocacy for both students and staff. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Homewood Elementary School, District 153 hereby commands Riley for her unwavering commitment to Homewood students and her exceptional standards of teaching excellence. Adopted unanimously this tenth day of November 2025.
Okay, congratulations. And Ms. Johnson and Ms. Yugo, if you would come up, please, to introduce our James Hart recipients.
She's looking like, where is she? One of the things that, um, as I was thinking about, and as we had figured out our nominees, is just the ability to be able to say thank you. Um, I always, when I do emails to staff, I always say, "Thank you, thanks for what you do," or whatever. But to be able to get up here and to personally say thank you to these two people is such an honor. So our first person is Karen Kirsten, who's an assistant here at her. So Karen, I want to say thank you for all you do for the sixth grade, the union, and our school community. Karen has been with the district for over twenty years. You are admired and appreciated more than you're ever known, and it's not just for your delicious cakes. I had asked, um, I was talking to Ms. Crowe, and actually, when I saw her words, I was like, I just gotta read hers, because it is everything about you. Karen is an outstanding assistant, whose dedication and compassion make a tremendous difference every day. She goes above and beyond to support our students, providing guidance, organization, and care in everything she does. Karen serves as a tutor, an admin assistant, and at times a mentor, and she excels in each of these roles with professionalism and heart. I am truly grateful for her unwavering commitment and the positive impact that she has on our students and our program. And like I said, when I read that, I'm like, it's on Zeno. So Karen, thank you so much, and we are so happy to, for you to be the recipient of this reward.
Jerry Moran Educational Excellence Award Board Resolution. Whereas Karen Kirsten is a loyal, committed, and valued member of James Hart School and Homewood School, District 153, for over twenty years. Whereas Karen brings patience, positivity, genuine care for students in her work each day, supporting both academic growth and social emotional well-being. She currently serves as an instructional assistant and member of the AGA Union Board. Whereas Karen was built, has built strong relationships with students and staff, serving as a trusted, dependable presence within the James Hart School community. Whereas Karen consistently goes above and beyond to ensure students receive the encouragement and support they need to be successful, often anticipating their needs before they arise. Whereas Karen's dedication, kindness, professionalism have left a lasting impact on the culture of James Hart and the colleagues who have had the privilege of working with her. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Homewood's Elementary School, District 153 hereby recognizes Karen for her dedication to Homewood students and her excellence in serving our learning community. Adopted unanimously this tenth day of November 2025.
So for our second nomination, and as again, as I was thinking about words to say, and I truly know that I have never told you, thank you as much as I should have. Thank you for... Thank you for being an excellent, oh, it's Carrie Sullivan, I'm sorry. Thank you for being an excellent PE teacher, mentor, coach, co-athletic director, lunch supervisor, white pies coordinator, sub dean extraordinaire, and our comic relief here at James Hart. Your presence is so warm and welcoming and it shows with your relationships with students and staff. Students love Sully and the staff do too. Thank you for all you do. And for me, I just want you to know just how much I appreciate just all the help. I mean, Sully, you, you are always checking on all of us just to see, are we okay? What do we need? And that's something that you do on a daily basis. And, and it tru-, again, it was just one of those things of when you're doing something like this, again, you tell people thank you, but then truly, and that's why I'm tearing up because it, it truly from the heart, I just want you to know how much it's appreciated. And I know that I see you do this for everyone. It's not just for us in the office, even though we appreciate you because you are on the days, he's the sub dean, he is the sub dean extraordinaire, I'm so happy for him. But truly just again, that presence, wanting to do extra above and beyond. You come up like, hey, I got an idea for this and you know, I love an idea. Let, let's do it, anything about the students, but that is you each and every day. You are about our students, you are about our staff, you are about the James Hart community, and we love you and we appreciate you.
Again, because no, now, so I need to insert Sully. All right, Terry Warren Educational Excellence Award Board Resolution. Whereas Carrie Sullivan has served as an educator at James Hart School for over 20 years. Whereas Carrie is a veteran member of the James Hart staff, serving as a physical education teacher. He is a cross-country coach, co-athletic director, white pies trip coordinator, and is the current AGA Union Co-President. His years of dedicated service have left an enduring mark on the James Hart community, shaping traditions, mentoring future teachers, and modeling excellence in educational service. Whereas Carrie goes above and beyond to ensure students experience meaningful physical education and extracurricular opportunities that promote teamwork, perseverance, and personal growth. His influence extends far beyond his official title at our school. Whereas Carrie consistently demonstrates exceptional leadership, professionalism, and a commitment to success. His positive attitude and collaborative spirit can contribute greatly to the culture and climate of our school. Whereas Carrie exemplifies integrity, compassion, and commitment in all that he does, his steady presence, sense of humor, and willingness to help others foster a strong sense of community and pride among students and staff alike. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of Homewood Elementary School District 153 hereby recognizes Carrie Sullivan for his dedication to Homewood students and excellence in serving our school community, adopted unanimously this 10th day of November, 2025.
Okay, I appreciate, uh, everybody who sat here. It's been an hour, if you can believe that. And if anybody took the time to look at my face for the last 60 minutes, you saw nothing but a smile. And it's not often that I'll sit here for an hour at a board meeting and smile, much less for the entire 60 minutes. So that's a testament, first of all, to the love that all of us in education have for students. So to our three students and your families, again, congratulations. To the room full of educators who came out to support the six people that were presented with awards tonight. Thank you for being here. And what I would say to everybody who is here in person, who's watching, a district is only as good as the people who comprise it. We can talk all we want about Homewood School District 153 and what a great place that is. The reality is, Homewood School District 153 is bricks, mortar, carpet. It's nothing without the people that you just saw. And so when you have great, great people, like the six that you saw tonight, the others who are seated here, we can accomplish wonderful things and we always strive to find the best people. But whoever we bring on board each year, the 12 people we hired this year, if they can one day be as good as the six that you saw this evening, Homewood School District 153 has a wonderful, bright future. So again, thank you, congratulations to the six of you. At this time, yes, one more. We actually have business that we need to do this evening in addition to the celebration. So, uh, we, we understand and actually fully expect all of you to get up and leave now. It's a public meeting, you're welcome to say, but we're going to give you a few minutes, uh, to clear the room. Uh, once, once people are gone, we'll continue with our business here. Thank you. All right, so we'll go ahead and get started in one minute. Right, uh, next thing on our agenda this evening is the 2025 IAR results. Thank you. So, uh, as I mentioned earlier, on October 30th, the statewide results for the recent IAR exam were released and made public. The Illinois Report Card was made public. And I thought it'd be a good opportunity, given that, um, for Catherine Zarnecki, who is our administrator in charge of our assessment program, to come forward and share a little bit about the results and how to interpret those. So Catherine, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. All right, so I could probably stand up here all night and talk about data. If anybody really knows me, I'm just a data guru. I love it. Obviously, nobody else wanted to say for it, but, uh, uh, so I'm going to go ahead and dig into some of the results. Um, one of the big things that I wanted to start off with is congratulating all three of our schools for being commendable this year. So we're going to go ahead and just kind of look a little bit about, the school report card is obviously public knowledge, um, but some people may not know like what compromises some of that school report cards are. I'm going to go through it a little bit. Um, but the first thing is, the state made a couple of changes this year to the school report card. Um, the big thing was, was looking at the proficiency levels. Um, what happened was, when we first rolled out IAR, uh, in order for a student to be proficient, they had a score of a 750. Every single student scored a 750. So the unfortunate thing is, that was for every grade level. So what they decided to do was, let's just revamp what this looks like, keep our expectations high, but revamp some of the norms about what does it need to be proficient in ELA and math for the state. Um, so they made some of those changes and the other thing that they changed was, they looked a little bit at, um, just those performance levels. And the performance levels for SAT, ACT, IAR, there was multiple different ranges. None of them really aligned and matched up. So I'm going to show you that in a second, but that's really like some of those big changes where, let's look at the proficiency levels and then let's also look at what those performance levels look like in order to keep it consistent through all the different state tests. Um, the one thing that did not change were just the test itself. So IAR did not change their test, they just changed the different levels of proficiency and performance. Um, and then the other thing is they did not change any of the standards. So the test didn't change, the standards, none of that changed. So here's one of like the bigger changes. So you can see here, IAR used to be a five performance level. And then you get to ISA was a four performance and SAT was also four performance. But if you look at all those language and all those words, nothing was aligned. So it was kind of hard and confusing to parents, to community members, like what does this kind of mean? So they decided that everybody was going to go to this four performance levels. So now we have below proficient, all the way to above proficient, and then we have that in between of approaching proficient and proficient. Um, so that was just one of some of the bigger changes, again, that the state decided to kind of make this year. So digging into what could make up the school report card, so where do these numbers come from? So Willow School is going to be a little different. And if you remember, I think both our building principals a couple, uh, board meetings ago, went through some of their sit plans. And they discussed, um, some of the differences between, like I said, James Hart and Churchill versus Willow. So these values, like I said, make up our school report card. So you can see those percentages up there. We break apart ELA and math proficiency are weighted the same, but then we make a bigger jump to ELA growth and math growth. Um, and then we also have chronic absenteeism. Two things that you're going to notice that are missing from this, that you're going to see in the next slides, is they don't have a science assessment, because that's only for fifth and eighth grade. So there's no science on here and you also see there's no climate survey because our little ones don't take that. So that's, I want you to just kind of look at these numbers a second and think again, these are the percentages that make up that school report card. And you can see there's kind of a big difference between some of those values. This is where James Hart and Churchill are a little bit different. So again, it's all 100%, but then it's breaking apart into a couple of different categories. We still have ELA math proficiency, we still have ELA growth and math growth, we still have chronic absenteeism, but now we're also assessed in science and we also have a climate survey. So they take those values and they're just going to kind of sort all those amongst it. But again, I want to keep your eyes on some of the differences. We know being a proficient student is really important. But you also, I think, heard in tonight, some of the presentations was how much growth some of our students were making and how we really wanted to celebrate that. And you'll see, looking at these numbers, the state also wants to reward students who are growing. And there is a huge percentage in just ELA growth and math growth right there. That's over 50% of our school report card is growing our students. And so we really want to continue to celebrate not just proficiency in our district, but when we're seeing that our students are growing and going in the right direction. Okay, so where do some of these numbers come up, especially for proficiency? We have a lot of slides on this and again, I'm not going to bore you with all the data, but the state has given us specific targets that we need to try to hit each year in ELA proficiency and math proficiency. So in this specific slide, you're going to see that 2025 is highlighted. In order for us to earn our full points, we have to hit that target number. And if every single group hits those target numbers each year, you'll see that bottom row by 2033, that every single student group is going to hit that 90 proficiency level.
Yeah, and I'll just point out again, every year, the proficiency target goes up. So the state expects our students to perform at a higher level year after year. And just take the first column, this is an example that the state provided. But when they started, uh, with this new system in the year 2022, 21.9% of all students were proficient. The goal at the very bottom, the last row, the goal across the board for all students, but also every disaggregated group is 90%. So what the state said was, where are we in 2022? That's the top row. We want to get to 90, divide that difference by 12 years, and every year, that group has to increase by that amount, okay? So that's why you can see, if you start to look at some of the disaggregated numbers, some of the jumps are more dramatic than others. Just using some very rounded math in the all category, it appears to be going up about six points a year, right? You can see how it goes up. So that will get us from 22 to 90 in 12 years. If you look at the white student category, the next column, the jump appears to be a little bit smaller, closer to five points. If you look at the next column, the third column, black student population, the jump here is about seven and a half points per year. And that's because the growth, the starting point for that subgroup is at a lower point than the previous subgroup, okay? So I just wanted to point out, the state has these charts, this is one of many, but it just shows that every year, we're expected to have a higher and higher proficiency. But it just shows that every year, we're expected to have a higher and higher proficiency, so that by the year 2033, every student is at 90%. That's the goal. Thank you. Is this specifically for 153, or is this statewide?
Yeah, this is statewide. So these are the targets that everybody's using on their school report cards. Yeah. So you're gonna see the next couple of slides. Again, this is on, uh, the school report card website, the Illinois School Report Card website. If you'd like to go, you can go ahead and dig into some of this data. But you'll see, this is where Willow School got their commendable rating this year. So again, those percentages that I showed you, um, earlier, this is just a breakdown of how Willow did in order to make up their commendable status. Um, so you'll see, uh, obviously, the ELA proficiency, they got full points. So just kind of that last slide that we showed, we hit that target. So that's something definitely to celebrate, is that we hit that target in order to get those full points, uh, for ELA and math proficiency. Um, then we're gonna go to Churchill School. So you'll see, we have a little bit of work to do. We were so close in the math proficiency, but I looked at the, uh, the score. I think we are like a 97 out of the 100. In order to get those points, we're just there. Um, but again, we still got that commendable rating, uh, and we're continuing to look at growing those ELA and math growth, um, because we know that that is a big, um, percentage. And then again, the difference between those houses are, you add in that climate survey. Uh, so those of you, those parents that are out there, students, when we ask you to fill out that climate survey, that fits into our school report cards. So that's why we need full participation when those surveys go out, um, because that feeds into this. Um, and then of course, we'll see, the difference with science proficiency, one thing I do want to point out, was when we looked at the IAR scores, I should say, we, the state looked at the IAR scores and reset those proficiency numbers, they lowered some of the expectation. They realized that we were way too high as a state, and so that proficiency came down a little bit in terms of what a student needed in order to be proficient. But they looked at the opposite direction, and the state decided that their ISA number, so the science assessment, they felt that the bar was a little too low. So they raised the expectation of the science assessment. So you'll see a little bit of maybe a discrepancy between previous year's data versus now, because of those proficiency, um, those proficiency targets changed a little. And then here's James Hart's school, who's commendable again as well. And once again, we're just kind of working through some of that math proficiency. I'm gonna go over in a second about what we're trying to do, because we're noticing in some of our data, that we still have some work to do, um, in math. Always continuing to grow in ELA, but, um, with the rest of the state, um, we have a little bit of work to do with math, and, um, I'll be sharing that in a second. But again, this is what made up James Hart's commendable status. But what I really want to get into next is that student growth. Um, a lot of times, it's hard to understand what is a student growth percentile. Um, we, we know that this is confusing for sometimes staff, but especially parents. Um, because we're so used to growing up here at 90, and it's like, oh, that's an A, and an 80 is a B. But what a student growth percentile actually means is the best way for somebody to describe it, put it on a slide, but it's like when a pediatrician says that your child is in the 75th percentile for height. What that means is, your child is taller than 75% of the other children in the same age. So let that soak in a second. So, this is the best way for me to describe it. Dr. McAllister and I are peers. We both took a test together last year. We took the same test. We're both, let's say, fifth, fifth grade students taking the math test. So he's, Dr. McAllister gets a score, and I get a score. Next year, we're gonna take the same, we're gonna take the next grade levels test. Dr. McAllister gets a score, and I get a score. What that's gonna do is, it's gonna compare us and see, did I grow faster than Dr. McAllister? Did I get a higher score than Dr. McAllister? And then we get ranked on how that score is. You get grouped with similar peers. So if you don't perform well, you get grouped with students who don't perform well. But if you perform really high, you also get grouped with those who perform really high. SGP is very difficult to sometimes understand, and that's why, um, November 17th, when we have some of that, that parent meeting to kind of understand your students' IAR scores, the NWVA scores, it's a great opportunity to have your students report and just get a little bit more information about what does that SGP actually mean? Because that shows up on the report, and sometimes that's confusing for parents. So we're happy to always answer those questions when those reports come out. Um, so please know, like I said, we understand that that's a little tricky sometimes, because we see that percentage and don't quite understand what that means. Um, but here is a breakdown of... The average target is 50% in terms of growth. So, this is a breakdown of each grade level. Who hit that student growth target of 50%? So you can see in this average right here, so fourth grade, what that means is, 47% of our students hit that 50% growth target that we were looking for. Um, and as you go up, you can see fifth grade hit 60, and so on. So that was for ELA, who hit that 50% growth target. And then we have our math. So, again, we're looking for hitting 50%, and this is a breakdown of the percentage. Do you want to say anything else?
Yeah, I, I think one thing, oh, I'm gonna be Mr. Obvious here. Education has become incredibly data-driven. If you go back 25 years ago, certainly when I entered the profession, this didn't exist at all. And if you hear people complain about us being too test-driven, this is it. Right? Everything we do to assess, and we have psychometricians in Springfield whose full-time job is figuring out this stuff, and then it's left to each local district to try to interpret it, and it is not easy. But if you recall, George Bush, No Child Left Behind, that was the beginning of what came to be known as the Accountability Era. We're gonna give you money from the federal government, but we're gonna hold you accountable to show us that your kids are learning. And what has happened ever since No Child Left Behind, 20-some years ago, is this accountability movement. The big change from No Child Left Behind to where we are now with what's called ESFA is that emphasis on student growth. You know, when No Child Left Behind came out, it was strictly proficiency. Did you hit the mark or not? If I'm a high jumper, did I clear the bar, or I didn't? Whereas now, most of our score is based on, well, you may not have cleared the bar, but did you jump higher over the course of the season? Right? That's an analogy. So, so we in education are happy that the emphasis is on growing our students, right? We can't control who comes in our doors, but we can control what happens, what, what input we give them when they're here. But I just hope all of you, I hope your heads are spinning a little bit, because this is what education in America has become, this data-heavy process. And I'm not saying that's bad in and of itself, but I'll go back to one of the first slides Catherine showed, which is what hasn't changed in this latest rendition? What hasn't changed is what we expect kids to learn. And if you just focus on that, like, the obvious question that all of you are asking, that all of you are asking, how do we get these numbers higher? How do we do better? We focus on good instruction. Right? We focus on helping all kids learn at a higher level. What do we want them to know? How can we show that they know it? It's really as simple as that, except it's not, of course. But it's just, I mean, it, it's frustrating to a degree, because I bet right now, some of you are sitting here saying, wait, what? Is, is 51.7? That sounds like an F to me. No, actually, that means, you know, more than half our kids did what they were supposed to do. Right? It's confusing. Uh, but that's, you know, again, this accountability movement that you hear so much about. This is how it manifests itself.
I have a question. So, um, you, you had a previous chart that had 2022, and then the expectation over the next 12 years of what it is. So this is a point in time in regards to the latest. So, does this screenshot right now that you showed me, we have another screenshot for 2022, 2023, 2024? How, how it's captured here as far as 50%?
So, that, that's a really great question. All the webinars that Dr. McAllister and I have been on, specific to proficiency, has said because they changed those proficiency levels this year, that it's very difficult to compare previous years in that category to this year. Again, it's one of those things where it's like, our heads are spinning when we're sitting on some of these webinars, and we want to be able to compare. We can, but it's kind of like, we have to take, we have tangerines, and we have oranges, and it's kind of in the same category. But since they changed those targets, anytime we're talking about proficiency, they're saying, focus on the fact that growth didn't change. We still took the same test last year. I still see, need to see if I grow faster than you. But the proficiency, they're saying, be careful with that, because they changed that bar. And so we, we don't want to really focus too much on some of that. Because they're saying, this is the baseline. So like, your proficiency baseline that you've got right now, with those new levels, focus on this being the baseline, but we know that growth, we can definitely look closer at.
So no, I appreciate that. So it's safe to say that it is a strong possibility that there'll be more changes out of Springfield. So, we can't say this is our baseline, this is our baseline as of, as of now.
Yes, today, yes.
But someone may come out of the darkroom and have a bright idea, we may have different data that we have to use as a baseline.
100%.
Okay.
So that's why we say, like, growth, we can definitely celebrate and compare that growth, because that's something that's not changing. You and I are gonna take the same test next year together, and I'm gonna see how I can compare to you. All right, so the last slide is, what are we just kind of doing locally to help with a lot of this? One thing I did put up here that I want, um, everybody to know, uh, the state does give us some resources. One of the things on there does say, using resources from the state. But on our district website, uh, on our curriculum and departments, we do have an assessment page, and there is a parent document in there that's been given to us from the state to kind of, again, break down some of this information that I shared this evening, um, to make it just a little easier, and like a two, two-page sheet to help parents really understand some of these changes. Um, but this year, we transitioned to NWVA. We used to take the STAR test. Some of the positive things we've noticed so far already with the NWVA test is it's very similar to what our students are expected when they sit down to take, uh, the IAR and ISA. Um, the format, the way it looks, um, we're able to celebrate growth a little bit differently, especially when we've talked about growth so much this evening. Um, we're really looking forward to, again, Dr. McAllister said, we're data-driven. It's really helping us, uh, dig into more specifics in order to figure out how we can help grow our students better this year. Um, analyzing standard results, one thing that did, uh, come from the state that's been more helpful than they've done in the past is, we're getting some more detailed data based on how we're doing on specific standards. So we're able to look into, what are we doing well at in each grade level on ELA and math? But where are we not performing so well? So that we're able to dig into, where are we teaching it? How are we instructing it? Um, so again, that's something nice that the state has given us this year that has been very helpful, that we've started to look at. Um, and then also, obviously, some of our local assessments, we're able to compare that, to see how are we performing locally? If the state says we're not doing so well on it, how are we doing now? So we can try and be more proactive, uh, before we get to the state test. Uh, using resources from the state. So the state got together a bunch of educators in ELA and math, and what they created were called performance level descriptors. Uh, what's nice about that is this performance level descriptors show us what does a student need to be able to do, for example, in math? If I need to add and subtract to 1,000, what does that look like to be proficient? And so the educators, it was great that the state did that, to be able to get educators together and decide, what does proficiency actually look like in a standard? Um, and some of our staff are gonna get trained on those, uh, this month, which is gonna be really nice for them. Um, then we have the parent night that we've talked about a couple of times, on November 17th. And then collaborating with IAC4, uh, to have math coaching for our staff. So thank you, Ms. Council, uh, for connecting us with that. It's been great. We've had, um, an educator from IAC4 in our classrooms, working closer with our teachers, um, in how to better perfect, uh, their instruction in math. So any other questions?
Two, I have two questions. One, um, could you remind us when, um, the IAR tests were taken?
March.
March, mhm. And, um, the second one, uh, how often does this coaching take place for our staff?
Oh goodness, I feel like she's always in our buildings. Morgan, do you know?
Six-week cycle. So they're just gonna start a six-week cycle at Churchill, and Eric and Michelle will be on Willow, and they'll do another one in January.
Great, thank you.
My question is on timing. Uh, from test administration, to when we get results, to when our staff is planning a school year. You know, it's always been an issue on timing. So it's not real time, assuming. But once the data's collected, there's several ways to grab information. So I'm just curious on, when we get our results versus when we're planning our school year? So is the timing, is it kind of overlapping? Is it, school's already started, we're gonna get out of school, and then we're getting... Just curious of the timing.
Then, yeah, great question. Um, in the past, with previous assessments, it took a long time to get our data. We're getting our data a lot faster now, to where when our curriculum department is doing some summer work, we do have some preliminary data. Again, it's preliminary data, so we can't say with a grade result, but for the most part, we do have some data to start being able to look at. So when we are looking closer at instruction and our assessments, uh, we do have some of that data already in front of us, which is a lot nicer.
Catherine, could you go back to one of the houses, please? So I just want to make sure everyone understands, if you Google Illinois Report Card, you can literally find this, we call it a house, for obvious reasons. But it's a nice visual. Any school in the state of Illinois has this house, anyone who takes the IAR. And you can see these results. So Catherine just copied the one off the website for James Hart, in this case. But I think it gives you a great visual of what we need to do better and where we're doing well, at least as of the most recent assessment. So as Catherine mentioned, on the far left, proficiency, we got most of those points. Our students hit that target that you saw in that 2022, 2033 chart, right? You can also see in the growth, the next column over, ELA growth, 19 out of 26 points, and 15 out of 26 points, we have some room for improvement there. So this board, our district, has invested a lot of resources into people. For example, Riley Pap, who was recognized tonight, she's a reading specialist. We have specialists in every building whose job it is to try to help kids who are performing at low levels do a little bit better. That's an investment. It's expensive. It's expensive to have Riley Pap working with two or three kids at a time. Right? That's not the, the cheapest way to provide an education. But we do feel it's the best way to help kids learn. And so I just want to try to put it in, in perspective that, yeah, we're aware of the growth, and that we can do better, that's, that's what we're striving for. But it's also why we invest in the MTSS process, multi-tiered systems of support. It's why we have interventionists in each building. It's why we provide high levels of support in math and language arts. The other one that you'll notice where we have some substantial room for improvement is absenteeism. And that is a problem since COVID, especially statewide. It is a huge problem, getting kids to come to school regularly. You know, the old saying, you can't learn if you're not there. It's as simple as that. And so, if you look at across the state, you'll see that chronic absenteeism is a problem area. Um, and I commend our principals. It's really been a point of emphasis for them, uh, in newsletters, in announcements. Make sure you're here, rewarding kids for being here, right? We don't want you here if you're sick. But we also want you to make an effort to get here every day that you're not sick. Right? Being in school matters. Right, any other questions?
I have a question, um, with this, looking at the, I think it was two slides ahead, with the math growth, we, you know, we had almost 16 points here. And for eighth grade math, is that looking at sixth, then eighth grade together, the whole school? And where do we need to get, where do we need this growth to get to, to get closer to those full points?
Yeah, so, for example, you notice like, third grade is not here. Because third grade, like, we, we just, that's kind of like that baseline, is that's the first time taking the assessment. So that fourth grade score came from those third graders being compared to their peers when they took it in fourth grade. Um, and so that's where I kind of brought up NWVA. Uh, looking at SGP locally, is seeing where are our students hitting that target, like, right now? Where are the students that are hitting that 50 and above? And what does that percentage look like? And then who are we kind of missing on the other end that isn't quite hitting that 50% target yet? that isn't quite hitting that fifty percent target yet? Again, that's average growth is the target that we want to hit is fifty percent. So that's kind of the best way to maybe explain how that keeps going from year to year. And being able to use an assessment that we feel confident in in order to be able to start tracking some of that and before we get to this stage and see how our students might be performing.
I'll also put in a plug again for Monday night. This is holistic aggregate data that you're seeing. Monday night, if parents come, they will be given their student's IAR report. And they can look and see how my child did and hear an explanation in real time, this is what it means. So it'll be really helpful for those parents who come on Monday night. Obviously, if you're not able to attend Monday night, we'll still get your report to you at a different time. But to have that explanation while you're looking at the report will be very helpful.
I guess just one comment I would have to say, I think last year, we're all a little surprised when we did, all of our schools weren't commendable a year ago. And I think, you know, returning to commendable for all of our, to all of our schools, I think, you know, I think it's due to a lot of time and effort and work by a lot of folks in our district. So thank you to all, to everyone who put the time and the effort into try and, well, not try, to get us back to where we are. It was a success. So thank you to everyone who did that and worked on it and got us to where we are. So it's good to have our schools back to, all three of our schools back to commendable. Okay, so thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Erniki.
Thanks. All right, moving on to the next agenda item, which is audience participation. Audience participation is limited to items that are not on this evening's agenda. With that, I'll move on to the next item, board responses. Are there any responses to any questions or concerns raised by the audience at previous meetings?
There are.
Report on board committee meetings are next. Are any board committees available? Now we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Yeah, just three quick items. I mentioned Seussical, the musical, that's next Thursday and Friday. Again, very popular event, there'll be a big crowd. Next week, beginning Monday, is American Education Week. That's always a celebratory time. It's actually an NEA-sponsored event, but it's meant to celebrate anybody and everybody who works in public education. So the board, as we have done in years past, will be providing breakfast for each of the buildings on a different day. And again, excited to celebrate all our educators for American Education Week. And last but not least, if you're watching the forecast this week, Dr. McAllister did not get much sleep last night. And the reason for that is the forecast took a dramatic turn. Usually forecasting has gotten pretty good. We know days in advance whether or not we're going to have a possibility of a closing. When we left here on Friday, there was no mention of twelve to eighteen inches of snow, which suddenly by Sunday morning, that's what they were talking about. So it was a harrowing day yesterday. Ultimately, made the decision to be open, which turned out to be the right decision. But I want you all to know, it was, it was nothing but luck. It easily, it easily could have gone the other way, and that's the problem, right? We rely on weather forecasters. I was on a 2:00 PM National Weather Service webinar. They gave an indication that this front was going to kind of sweep to the east and miss us. And so I made the decision at that time that we're going to stay open. And again, gratefully, it was the right one. But just know that that is probably the, I don't want to say it's the most difficult, but it's definitely one of the most difficult decisions a superintendent has to make. Because you're talking about safety, you're talking about staff members who have to travel, you're talking about kids who are young, standing outside. So please know that that's a very difficult decision. But I was, I was grateful that the forecast did what it was supposed to and it nailed our Hoosier neighbors. Catherine traveling for, Eric, Catherine traveling from Indiana, they got blasted. We had four inches. Eric, what'd you have over there?
Eleven or twelve.
Eleven or twelve. Catherine, about the same, right? Ten miles east, another, you know, triple the snow amount. So lake effect snow is a real thing. But thanks to our custodians, Brian Vell, who was recognized this evening, and Tara mentioned this, they were here at 4:00 AM. I was, I was set my alarm at 4:00 AM, they're already out here plowing. So kudos to all of them for getting our schools ready.
Thanks, thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda items. First item is about the rise of chief school business officials to pay the usual and customary bills for December twenty-twenty-five. Next item, item B, approval of the state report cards. Any questions or comments on the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five state report cards? And it was great news to see that all three schools are commendable. Personnel reports.
The only thing I'll mention on personnel, we have two people who put in for retirement. Lori Velisca, special ed teacher at Churchill. Lori's been in the district, she will have been in the district for twenty years when she retires. So again, a longtime educator. We are sorry to see her leave, but not until twenty thirty. So we have four more years. And then Jody Dunn, Jody works in our district office. It is not an exaggeration to say that Jody could be a chief school business official. Dr. Trinberger has said as much, and he has one and has been one for his whole career. Jody is exceptional. She is incredibly knowledgeable and is just kind of a foundation in that business office that we have been able to rely on for a quarter century now. But Jody has put in for retirement also and will be retiring in twenty thirty. So we also have four more years with her. But congratulations to those two on that decision.
Questions? Personnel report? If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in items seven A, seven B, and seven C.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Popelka?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to our action agenda items. The first item is the second payment of October twenty-twenty-five bills and first payment of November twenty-twenty-five bills. Are there any questions that anyone had of more bills that? If not, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education authorize a second payment of October twenty-twenty-five bills and the first payment of November twenty-twenty-five bills in and amount not to exceed two million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-one cents.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Pay the bills.
Mrs. Popelka?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the preliminary twenty-twenty-five tax levy.
It is tax levy season. Dr. Trinberger, our chief school business official, if you can come forward and say, explain the two thousand twenty-five tax levy.
Good evening. One of the challenges with preparing this year's levy is when last year's levy hasn't been finalized by Cook County. They did announce this week that bills are going to be mailed out on November fourteenth and due December fourteenth. But they haven't finalized our actual levy yet. So we have a draft levy from Cook County. So for twenty-twenty-four, we'll have an operating levy of twenty million and fifteen thousand dollars. A debt levy of five million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. A total of twenty-five million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So for twenty-twenty-five, the consumer price index is two point nine percent. So we'll be increasing our operating levy by that, which is about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, as well as allowing a little bit for new construction for a total as of about four point seven percent. Which should be about a total of twenty-six point eight million dollars. The debt levy will be held flat over twenty-twenty-four levels as we look at restructuring debt as well as issuing some life safety bonds.
Any questions from the board?
Six seconds.
Audience? All right, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education approve the preliminary twenty-twenty-five tax levy asked presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Popelka?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, approval of the ten-year life safety survey and amendments.
And we've had discussions in the last couple of meetings about our facility study, the ten-year life safety study. And Dr. Trinberger will talk about how we're going to pay for that.
So this evening, we're asking the Board to approve the formal submissions to the Illinois State Board of Education. Since Studio GC presented the board, they have learned through other clients that the state is becoming a little bit more stringent upon what they're approving under life safety, especially under category C recommended items. So because of that and the fact that our request is time-sensitive in order to be able to sell bonds for the twenty-twenty-five levy, we've removed about thirteen million dollars of category C items from the three buildings that have been previously shared with the board. A lot of that was windows and site work, flooring, things of that nature. And these were items that we really didn't have a revenue stream identified to pay for over the next ten years. But what did get submitted for James Hart? Category A, which are items which seem to be done within one year, four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Category B, which is within five years, eleven point seven million. And category C, recommended items, one point nine million. Twelve for James Hart of fourteen point one million dollars. For Willow School, category A, within one year, sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Category B, within five years, two point three million. Recommended item, six hundred thousand, for a total of two million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand. For Churchill, category A, seventy-one thousand, one thirty-one. Category B, one point nine million. And category C, one point two million. Total for category A, B, and C for all three buildings is twenty million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And we've identified between fifteen and sixteen million dollars that are available in bond proceeds without increasing our debt levy, depending upon the interest rates at the time we sell.
I also want to point out, a picture's worth a thousand words. If you recall, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, we had a flood at James Hart. Here's the culprit in my hand. This is the pipe that connects from the wall to the sink that sheared off and, I don't know, water was flowing into our building for countless hours before it was discovered on Monday morning. So this is the type of thing that's hidden behind a wall, but is desperately needed for replacement, right? So that's the type of work, part of what is being mentioned in the life safety study.
Questions or comments?
I just want to say, we, we had, you know, as I was mentioning earlier, but at the FNP meeting, we had discussions on our submission. This is something we have to be very careful because we don't want any time to waste. So I appreciate all the work. And I will say that, you know, a lot of work has gone into this. A lot of districts wish they could do the survey that we had and to be able to prioritize as we do in our own households. So this is important work. And I just wish that those in the community just knew how much work goes into this and that, you know, we're committed to those things that aesthetically may not be noticeable, but are key, such as the clogged up pipes here that keeps our building safe for our students. So I appreciate all the work that went into this. And the raising of the taxes.
Well, probably worth mentioning, and Dr. Trinberger may have rung wrong. I mean, the work we've done at Willow and the roofs at Willow or Churchill, I mean, that, that was the beginning of a lot of our life safety work that we've done. So this is just a continuation of what we've done the last two summers. And one of the things we're looking at doing is hopefully repairing roofing or some or all parts of the roofs, kind of to be determined here at James Hart, along with other things that a lot of the other buildings do. So I think Studio GC, well, Studio GC provided us quite a long, detailed, longer list of A, A-category items and B-category items, things that we need to address. Working on, working through them to try and figure out when the best time to do them is. Dr. Trinberger, there are two sub-thanks to all the work that you've done, Dr. Trinberger, with regards to making this happen. All right, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education approve the ten-year safe, life safety survey for Willow School, Churchill School, and James Hart School.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Popelka?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is the approval of a resolution regarding property tax intervention.
Yes, we work with our attorneys who file tax appeals on our behalf, oftentimes coming from local businesses. So we employ Patarca Gleason, Boylanizo. And you can see those bills that sometimes come through in the board packet. But this resolution simply gives us the ability to have them work on our behalf without a special approval taking place every time we need them to do the work. So it's, it's proactive in nature, but it's something we've been using for several years.
Any questions from the board about this item? The audience? Do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the resolution regarding property tax intervention.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Popelka?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes. Motion carries. Employment.
Just two people for employment, Joshua Gaskew, an assistant at Churchill, and Nia Manley, supervisor at Churchill. Mr. Gaskew was hired and resigned in the same board packet. He actually was employed here a very short time. But nonetheless, we need to formally approve his hiring and his resignation on the same evening.
Interesting, so first, I think. Questions or comments from the board? The audience? Not very motion-pleaders.
Moved upon the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education approve the employment of Joshua Gaskew, effective October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and Ania Manley, effective November four, twenty-twenty-five, on the terms recommended by the superintendent, conditioned only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report and upon receipt no later than November seventh, twenty-twenty-five, of evidence of proper legal qualifications for the position to be filled.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Popelka?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is discussion items. First, we have press one twenty.
Yes, it is our quarterly press update. Please take a look at that, and we will ask for approval at our December meeting.
Mr. Secretary?
Just trying to fail and start reading that press one twenty. No, there is no further communication.
Thank you.
I just want to note that tonight is our first motion.
With that, we have a motion to adjourn.
So no.
All in favor?
Aye.